It's not Megan here a moment ago, so when she gets in, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm glad to see you brought it up for everybody on the coffee. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are ready, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we're grateful for this day and all the opportunities it presents. We ask your presence in this gathering, be with us as we deliberate, and be with us as we adjourn. We ask this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Beltier.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of today's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the agenda for today's meeting. Is there any discussion, any additions, deletions, or any other alterations proposed to our agenda today?
No, thank you.
Very well, with that, you'll recognize to close, Commissioner.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next regularly scheduled commission business meeting, commission meeting, is a business session scheduled for Wednesday, August 25th at 6:00 P. M.
Very good. That brings us to honorary resolutions. There are none listed today. We have under discussion two items listed. The first one is the golf course audit. With that, I guess we will hear from our auditor. If you'd like to proceed when you are ready. As the auditor makes his way to the podium to speak, I would just like to mention to all here, if you would like to address the commission, please make sure that the light is green at the collar of the microphone, that you speak into the microphone clearly, and that you identify yourself before proceeding so that the audio recordings will reflect who is speaking. With that, Mr. Auditor, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. Before I begin, I just want to thank the commission for hearing this presentation of an audit. It's a welcome change from my prior experience in the first two years of my term. I also want to take a moment to thank Midwest Golf Management, who is the outside third party that manages the golf course, as well as golf staff. Our superintendent and our deputy administrator, Carl Walters, is here. They were above and beyond in cooperation with this audit, which I greatly appreciate, very transparent, and that was the main reason why I awarded a four out of five stars as my rating system or equivalent of a good and other rating scales. I know we have a full agenda today, so I'm going to be very brief and not go through every detail in this audit. It is available online for the public to review at claycountymo.gov/departments/auditor, and you have it in your packet as well. But basically, the outline of my remarks here will be, you know, summative in nature, and I'm going to follow the table of contents, which is on the second page there. And with that, let's go ahead and jump into the introduction and scope. So essentially, as we recall in June, we had a little discussion, we were talking about bond projects about the golf course and whether or not, as far as from a county's perspective, is there a profit or loss for the taxpayers of Clay County. And I offered with my office to look into that very question. This has come up not just from the commission, but also numerous citizens, I will tell you, have brought this question up to me as well. It's been a question when we look nationally at public golf courses. And however, as far as the scope, it's fairly limited in nature. It is not a performance audit under government auditing standards. It's more of a review, and that's just because I'm giving the data as far as the revenues, expenditures, and leaving it at that. So just so you're aware, as far as the scope for that. In the next section, we talk about the background and audit plan. We all know that our golf course is fairly unique. It sits on property that the county doesn't technically own. It's leased from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the overall Smithville Lake property, and we contract out for the professional management and operation of the golf course. Again, like I said, with MGM, the current lease is 2012 ordinance 15 and expires in December of next year. One thing I did note, though, in looking at the overall background, is that we have an ordinance that mentions a golf advisory board. It's a non-statutory board, and it mentions there should be three members, one of which should be a park board member, and that individual should be the chair liaison to the park board. From the information I currently have available, that doesn't seem to be the case, so that might be something the commission should review. And then as to the audit plan, we're going to have four main sections. First, the main question, the profitability of the golf course to the county. Second, as part of that question, I looked into the rent calculation, part of the revenues. Is that done correctly? Third, the prices charged at the golf course, are they compliant with what the commission has approved? And finally, other areas of contract compliance, again, the under the current contract 2012 ordinance 15. So again, feel free to ask questions whenever, but I will open up to questions once I'm done here, when we go through the audit. So first, the main question, the profit or loss. If we look at, beginning with the revenues, the main source of revenues to the county from the golf course are from green fees. 100% of green fees come to Clay County, and they make up around 65% to 74% of our revenues from the golf course, so that is the majority component. Obviously, we can see the trend is certainly downward over the past decade. We've gone from, you know, near a million dollars total to somewhere around 3/4 of a million dollars. But you'll notice in 2020, that really bounced back, and that is likely due to the pandemic. People got outside. There's also a lot of investment at the golf course with our bond expenditures, frankly, with the new irrigation system to make the course look attractive and a place where, you know, players want to come back. And, you know, through half of the year, we're already at 450,000 in revenue. I pulled some numbers this morning. Just a second, I left my paper over there. Thank you, Representative, or, no, thank you, Leslie. Apologize for that. So yes, the revenues as of today, $634,000. So you can see, we're getting to a trend essentially here, where we're going to exceed expenditures this year, and revenues are looking really good. But if we move on, that's just the actual revenue to the county. There are some other ancillary things not really considered. So the golf course collects sales taxes. County gets a portion of those sales taxes. That's not really estimable. You also have that they're current on their licenses with the clerk as an amusement and liquor licenses. You have a neighborhood adjacent to the golf course, tons of property tax there. You have tourist impact and sales taxes from those tourists. So those are things that are not included in here because they aren't directly measurable, but something to mention. Let's go to the other side of the ledger, the expenditure side. I look at the chart of accounts, categories of personnel, contractual commodities, capital, and you'll notice expenditures have conversely grown over the past decade, especially when you look at the contractual category in 2016. Most of that was due to temporary personnel, from what I can gather. In 2018, there was a large spike for a pump house purchase that was done, not out of capital lines, but out of commodity lines. Something that wasn't included in our current ledger was that utilities expenses for the county portion of operated facilities are centralized within the park fund, so I included those, about $20,000, $30,000 a year, to get an accurate picture of expenditures for the county. And then the main I want you to look at is page eight. When we put it all together and we look at the revenues versus expenditures, that gray line there is the net profit and loss. And so you can see, in 2016, we started going negative in a deficit, so to speak. In 2020, that gap really bounced back, and like I said, with about $634,000 in revenues to date, only $379,000, or about a quarter million dollars of surplus right now, and I'd expect that trend to continue. So I think in 2021, you're going to see, going back to the trend we've had historically, so reversing what has happened since 2016. So that's the main part that I wanted to spend some time on. The second part of the audit was the rent calculation, and just a little nuance, it mentions that it's supposed to be adjusted annually by inflation, the consumer price index in the urban. However, it appears that what's being done is, we're adjusting it based off the base rate every year instead of compound. So typically, the way inflation works is you change it year to year, you don't return to some static base. And so my main reservation with the calculation is not so much that, especially given the amount of revenue it gives to the county relatively compared to green fees, but the county has no part in the process. Typically, a lessor will tell the lessy, this is your rent. You know, the lessy doesn't just get to pay what, you know, what they wish. So I think the county should have a role in that. That's really the only thing I mentioned there. The third part was the prices charged. Per the contract, the prices charged at the golf course are supposed to have commission approval, and when we look at the prices charged at the golf course, they, for the most part, comply over around 80%, however, they also charge a number of other prices that have never been approved by the commission. So I think the next time the county does a fee schedule, they should make that accurate. For the most part, when there is a mismatch, they're undercharging, but again, the major component of revenues are green fees. And then lastly, the contract compliance piece, I looked at some other areas of contract compliance. The state auditor asked last year if anyone at the county is verifying what we're getting paid from the golf course is accurate. Previously, the county auditor was not part of that process, so I reached out in March of 2020 last year, and they immediately complied and gave us monthly reports that they had been sending to the Parks Department, but not the county auditor. And those are well done, and we look at their daily deposit slips as well to the bank, and those are reviewed thoroughly by them. But I wanted to go a little deeper to do my due diligence and test some of those days. And so I selected some tests, and we looked at the actual receipts, point-of-sale documents, and those all matched up with no exception. They're also required to spend $25,000 a year on advertising. I selected 2020, which was the year of the pandemic, that they in fact did that by over $1,700. So those are some other areas. To my knowledge, I don't know of a county auditor who's ever done an audit on a golf course, and so I just, again, want to thank MGM for their indulgence, and I think, you know, hopefully this answers the question as to where the county stands as far as, is it worth our effort? I will say, just lastly, it's a considerable amount of revenue. Yes, it is a considerable amount of expenditures, but when you look at a $100 million budget, about $80 million in revenue, and close to a million of that is from your golf course, that's a significant sum. So with that, I will open up to questions. I do have some attachments back there as well, the county-approved prices and the consumer price index. That is it.
Thank you very much. That was a very good presentation. One of the things, before we get into the subject more specifically, that I'd like to point out is, you had mentioned the website where this report can be found, if the public would like to look at it themselves and certainly see what it is we're seeing. I just want to point out, and if you want to highlight any, that would be fine, that this is not the only report that they can find if the public would like to go on and see. Do you have any other reports that you think might be worth bringing to the attention of the public? Obviously, there's a number there, and they're free to look at them.
Certainly, yeah. So I've done a number of audits since I started here, and those are all there from 2019, 2020. We've looked at the highway department, the airport in a similar fashion, a lot of things dealing with the former commission administration. Whenever an office holder changes, I look into those questions as well. So they're all there at claycountymo.gov/departments/auditor, and I really appreciate this process. I think going forward, this is something I'd like to see more of, frankly, is to have some deliberation with the governing body. And then there's also, our financial statements are there, a monthly picture of our finances and where we sit, which I think is, you know, informative for the commission. Our monthly reports are on there as well, so, yeah, there's a lot of good information there for the, just the financial picture of the county. Absolutely.
I didn't want to leave the impression that the only thing that if the public was interested, they would find there would be the report on the golf courses, but there's a lot of information there. So if a citizen is interested in digging deeper into some of the areas of government where we're spending their money, that information is available there, at least a good portion of it, so that they could then log on to that and become more aware of what's going on within government. The other thing that I want to mention is that I am extremely happy to be having this conversation. In the past, we couldn't really have a discussion on the golf course, on its profitability or any of the others, so the idea that we are now, under this new commission, have the ability to have these open public discussions about, you know, something that's as important an asset as a golf course is a really, is a really big, is a really big thing. I was happy to see that there was a four out of five star rating as far as your evaluation of what we have on the golf course. Am I right? Because, I mean, you know, clearly, you answered a couple of the questions I had going, as you went forward with your presentation, you accounted for the spike that occurred in 2017, 2018. Did the expenses that were reflected, did they include some of the expenditures that were made through the certificate of participation, or was it strictly just money that came out of general revenue in other places? Did that include the C O P money that was spent on the golf course? Because I believe there was some.
Yeah, great question. And so, no, that was not bond money. That was actually a pump house done separately from the bond money, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't really mention that in particular. So we do have about $8.3 million in capital value out there, and a lot of those expenditures came through some of the current bonds, but also previous debt and bonds, because we've been building out this golf course since 1982. So, you know, it stands to reason that there's a lot of capital out there. So, no, the most recent bonds were the irrigation systems in 2019 and 2020 of around $3.5 million, so, yeah. And that was not included in the calculation of expenditures, because frankly, it's, you'd have to, like, almost amortize it over, you know, the life of, you know, of the asset, so.
Yeah, I realize that that was not necessarily in your report, but I want to make sure that that was brought out so that we understood how money was being spent and where it was coming from. So I appreciate that. Something else that you point out is the golf board itself, which currently has three members. That's a relatively recent development. Prior to that, there were more members on the board, and this is more of a broad point and something that I want to bring before the commission at some future date when it comes to boards and commissions, and that is, I would like to see that expanded out into possibly a larger board, obviously after discussion, to see if there's a consensus for the commission on that. But one of the things that you'd mentioned was having a member of Parks Board on the golf board, that's what we're supposed to be doing. As we go forward, looking at how it is that we approach the subject of tourism, I'm kind of inclined to think in terms of possibly having some overlap with that body as well. That's, again, a future discussion, but as long as we're on the subject, I wanted to bring it out and to at least express to the public and to my fellow commissioners that that was a direction I thought worth discussing at some future point when we flesh it out a bit. But I think that's, there's no doubt the golf course is, among other things, a good tourism asset that we would be, that we need to make sure that we are fully using to the advantage of taxpayers. There's no doubt about that. With that, I think I'm going to go ahead and open this up for the other commissioners. I may come back with some future questions, some further questions, but I want to open it up for the more broad discussion. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have anything you'd like to add or ask?
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it. First of all, you know, again, thank you for your work on this. This is an amazing product, and I'm very grateful, and I think this is, specifically as it pertains to the golf course, long overdue in terms of, not from you specifically, just from the county government in doing this analysis, so I think this is really important. I do want to talk a little bit about the expenditure loss numbers, and then as they relate to the bond investment money. My rough math on it is that over the last decade, it's about a $400,000 profitability net, which obviously is pretty close to breaking even. Looks like over the last five years, we're down about $900,000, but if you count the five previous years, it puts us up about $400,000. So $400,000 over a decade, obviously, like I say, pretty close to breaking even on it, but we do things every so often, like what we did with the most recent bond package under the previous commission, in which we invested $4.3 million, I believe, is the total number that went to the golf course. And as you mentioned, my understanding is that in the 2000s, there was a similar package during that time as well, in the multimillion-dollar range investment into the golf course. And so it does feel pretty important to me that every 10, 15, 20 years, if we're going to be putting multiple millions of dollars of taxpayer money into the golf course, and then over the course of a decade, we're only going to be netting $400,000 in profitability when you subtract out the 4.3 million and then the previous investments as well, obviously that puts us in the red pretty significantly. And so that's a concern to me, because I know we sort of group the golf course in with parks and trails and all that, which is, you know, government loses money in those investments, as in, we invest money in those investments. For me, I always have distinguished the golf course, simply because when it comes to things like trails and parks, really, the government is going to be the only entity that is going to make those investments because they aren't money earners, whereas with golf courses, as we all know, there are lots of private golf courses. Golf courses will exist irrespective of the government having its own golf course. And so, is there any way, and I really, this is an amazing report, and I don't mean to diminish it at all, but is there any way that you can think of that we could factor in? You mentioned that it's hard to, because it is, you know, paid back over the course of many years, that sort of thing. Is there any better way that we can think of some of that long-term debt obligation as it pertains to, as it relates to the revenue coming in, which is pretty insignificant?
No, certainly. I appreciate your comments. They make sense to me. I think the only thing I would mention there is, so we pay about $333,000 a year to the Army Corps of Engineers, and, you know, going back to the agreements, my understanding as to why we do that, $313,000, apologies, is because there was a large capital put forth by the federal government at the time to impound Smithville Lake to prevent flooding. That, you know, agreement comes up, you know, at the end of 2031, so it's a little bit long-term, you know, a decade out, but I would, I don't, you know, I would pose to the commission at that time to really look at, why are we paying that? We have poured, not just in the golf course, but all park capital investments, and so I think that might be something to negotiate at that time, if it's allowable, if it's feasible. So that might be something to look at. Beyond that, in discussions when I went out in the field to meet with the operator at the golf course, it was interesting, kind of the comparisons between other public golf courses. Apparently, we're in a very unique situation where, you know, other public golf courses around town, for instance, manage on a situation where they don't pay the government anything, so there is no revenue. They get to keep it all, and then, you know, those other jurisdictions essentially cover their expenses. So there's that for consideration as far as how we're set up here, and then, you know, since the land can't, nothing can be done on the land currently as it is, there's that aspect. But I agree, it's certainly, you know, a question there to look at, is it, you know, with parks overall, and then also with the golf course, of should we be, should we be doing this? I mean, clearly, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, we would have to, again, and I could look at it in a different way of looking at the total capital there, you know, spreading that out, like I said, over since 1982, and then as a, maybe as a percentage of the overall Smithville Lake lease, and do that. So that's something I'd be interested in looking at in the future, yeah.
Thank you. One, just quick follow-up question. In terms of the capital asset value at 8.3 million, what does that figure ultimately mean? So obviously, we're, because we're leasing the land from the Corps, and that's part of my hesitation, too, with these big multimillion-dollar investments that we make out there every so often, is that because we don't have traditional total ownership of this property, I'm concerned about being able to recover that value should this commission or some future commission seek to exit the golf course business. So that 8.3 million, if, let's say hypothetically, the commission did decide to move in that direction and pass it off to a private entity to operate the golf course, is there, would we be able to recoup the 8.3 million, or who owns the 8.3 million of value there?
Well, so, all that figure really represents is just my duty to, you know, reflect the capital asset values around the county, and currently, by state statute, it's anything over $1,000. Computer equipment, $500 by county ordinance. So that represents the value less depreciation every year by accounting schedules, and, you know, some of that could be recouped in a theoretical surplus auction, obviously not 100%, but at some level, and certainly it brings in annual revenue, as we've seen. You know, beyond that, I would say, if it were in some theoretical deal, I think you would bring that figure to, in that, you know, component or in that negotiation, to say, this is what it's worth, so.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have any additional questions at this time, but I do appreciate you putting this together. As always, your reports and your audits are very thorough, and this has given me a lot to look over, and I love being able to see where we are trending on this, and I really do appreciate it. So I will definitely let you know if I come up with anything additional besides what has been brought up already. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to join this discussion? Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Auditor. Again, a fine report, and certainly one that we will be using going forward as we deal with the issue of the golf course. That ends the discussion on the golf course from the auditor. That brings us to the county municipal trails, parks partnership discussion.
Commissioner Carpenter asks for that to be on there.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to introduce this as a discussion item?
Sure, thank you. So, sort of in the same vein of the parks and trails discussion, I think there are potential opportunities of partnering with our municipal partners here in Clay County, whether it's Kansas City or others, in addition to the potential of regional dollars with mark or federal dollars being available. And I think it's worthy of a brief discussion in terms of what potential opportunities might exist out there. And honestly, the first thing I want to do is, we have here today with us, Wes Mender with the City of Kansas City, and he's reached out to us, as commissioners, with some ideas that he has, so if it would be amenable to you, Mr. Presiding Commissioner, I'd love to let him say a few words. to, to let him say a few words.
Yes, Mr. Minder, if you'd like to address the commission and, as I said, please make sure the mic is on and to speak clearly into the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Wes Minder, I'm an Assistant City Manager for the City of Kansas City. I am also a Platte County Park Board member in my volunteer time and so what, what I had asked this discussion item or approached all three of you was, as an employee of the City of Kansas City, I have been working for the last 16 years on securing federal grant money and partnership agreements with multiple municipalities, Jackson County, Platte County, Gladstone Riverside, Parkville, and you've seen kind of some of the fruits of those efforts. We've got a great system we've done with Gladstone, with building the Shoal Creek Trail in and out of Happy Rock Park. That was done with three separate projects that had $500,000 federal grants and then partnerships with Gladstone and Kansas City, Missouri. We also completed our Line Creek Trail about five years sooner rather than we, than we should have by working out a three-party agreement between Riverside, Platte County and Kansas City. And so, we have a, you know, there's some debate on whether or not the federal gas tax should be using, be used for trail or alternative transportation projects, but in the region, every two years, the Mid-America Regional Council has anywhere between $5 to $6 million to spend throughout the region. And my philosophy has always been if the federal government is going to spend money on something, I would like to do what I can to get those dollars spent within Kansas City, Missouri. And so, again, working through partnerships on that, as a Platte County Park Board member, earlier this year, we renewed, or last year, we renewed our, we had a half-cent sales tax for parks and stormwater. We went through a sales tax committee and revised that quarter, quarter cent for law enforcement and quarter cents for parks and recreation. The reason for that was, most of that initial 20-year tax went to build the YMCA's in Platte City and Parkville and since those large capital expenditures were done, we didn't need to keep that at a full half cent, so we reduced it to quarter cent. But as part of that quarter cent sales tax, you know, we're, we're using that, you know, Riverside has partnered with Parkville and they've completed the kind of gap connection in Riverside. And so now, you can use a trail system to go from English Landing Park in Parkville all the way up to Zona Rosa and all the way over to Weatherby Lake. And then with the improvements that Parkville and Kansas City partnered with on MoDOT, you can use 45 Highway and you could get all the way out to 435 and 45 of the new Creekside Development. And so, we built a connected system, but one of the things we did with that renewal, that sales tax, is Platte County issued, set aside a certain pot of money of approximately $3 million and they set up a grant program for municipalities to apply for projects because all of our, you know, municipalities have, you know, you know, funding needs. And there's a lot of stuff that crosses, crosses, you know, multiple municipalities, you know, there's no way that that Shoal Creek Trail system in Happy Rock Park could not, could have been done unless Kansas City and Missouri were working together. And we've been very successful, I want to say in 15 years, we've secured approximately $7 million of federal transportation alternative funds just in Platte County alone, in addition to quite a bit, over $25 million of roadway funds. And so, I would like to offer any assistance I might be able to offer assisting the county with either some sort of grant program. I know from my prior experience in the past year working for a private consulting firm, I know that Excelsior Springs has quite a few projects they would like to do from a parks and trails standpoint, connecting to the highway and connecting downtown to the high school. And then I also know that Smithville got two $500,000 grants to do the similar projects and I know that Gladstone has a few other projects. And so, as a municipal partner with, within the county, you know, we're always looking for ways to accelerate things and it, and it comes down to the limited funding we have given our geography and our other constraints. So, with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or any follow-up.
Commissioner Carpenter, it's your discussion item, would you like to lead off?
Sure, thank you. First of all, thank you for, you know, being here and bringing these ideas before us. In terms of what a grant program that would partner with municipalities would look like structurally, because I'm definitely interested in it personally, doing that here in Clay County as well, sort of, you know, taking what the, the best experiences were out of, out of your Platte County experience doing that. What would you envision that actually looking like, a grant program? So we, we would, as a county, contribute funds into it and then send out notice to the various municipalities of, of the way they can apply?
That's how the Platte County Commission did it. They, they established a certain amount and then they sent out the request and then the municipalities submitted basically grant applications, you know, construction cost details, proposed alignments, you know, a description of the benefit, the purpose and need, you know, because we want to make sure that there's an actual need and a purpose for a project. And then, as a, as a board member, the board reviewed all the grants. I want to say that we had, the funds available, we had about that amount applied and so almost all the projects got funded. There was a couple of projects that the board didn't feel met, you know, a true purpose and need. And so, from an oversight perspective, the board kind of did a lot of the work and assistance, working with county staff and then ultimately made a recommendation to the commission.
Got you. Thank you. And in terms of potential projects that might be out there right now and, and funds that might be available in the near future, do we, are we looking at any kind of time constraints in terms of any dollars that might be available right now for, for existing projects that we may need to?
And the two projects I asked for you have been around for a while and we're kind of running out of time on those, but there is a, in January, the Mid-America Regional Council will issue a call for projects for additional grants, for federal grants. And so, there would be some opportunity, I know that Liberty has a desire to build a trail connection from Liberty Hospital down towards 291. So it would help a lot of municipalities, you know, kind of, you know, if there, there would be a way to have some discussions, to kind of get strategically placed so that we can walk away with all the money, because frankly, I'd rather have the money spent here rather than going to Blue Springs early summer.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's all I have for now. I, I look forward to, you know, as we continue this conversation going forward, you, you offered yourself as a, as a resource and I look forward to taking advantage of that, so thank you for doing that and hopefully, if my other two commissioners have questions going forward too, reach out to Wes, I think he's pretty eager to, to help us on this subject, so.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't really have too many follow-up questions at the moment, but I do appreciate you taking your time today and coming in and I am curious to hear more about the project, especially with the money coming in. I agree with you, I'd rather get it spent here and in our neck of the woods than letting it go a little further away, so let's touch base soon and I want to, I want to hear some more about those projects.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a number of discussions over the years, back and forth, and one of the things that I originally wanted to see in this county, which circumstances prevented me from, from progressing on, was an interconnectivity of different trail systems. It's something that I still have an interest in and I wanted to explore that a little bit. That seems to me to be the way to get the best bang for our buck is there going to be, there are going to be opportunities for the county to be involved in connecting trails between different municipalities that have existing systems, obviously Kansas City being the largest of the municipalities in the, in our county. I had a question on the Platte one. I assume that they have a master plan that is kind of the template they use is when they're trying to qualify projects for the, the grants that they go, that they use.
Yeah, we, we have a, Kansas City, Missouri has a citywide trails plan. I believe Liberty is wrapping one up or finishing one. Excelsior, when I was on the private side, we were working on something for them and so there's been, you know, some work, a planning effort on prioritization, you know, all the projects that I tend to pick for, cherry pick for, Mid-America Regional Council funds, you know, there's a scoring criteria, so I'm always looking for projects that connect public facilities, schools, transit opportunity, and then, you know, that's part of the reason why we've been so successful with Gladstone, with Happy Rock Park as a nexus and now that we're branching out, we make the argument that these are connecting. And so, you know, it's pretty, pretty easy to kind of identify those areas and where there's a need, but I know that between Liberty, I want to say two years ago, they applied for two funds. I know that they want to do something that would connect the Flintlock Flyover and South Valley Middle School down south to the neighborhoods around there. And so, those are the kind of the things that would make a lot of sense.
There were some, and I'm, I'm thinking of one in particular, that was used, again, under the COP criteria that we are currently have in place, up and around Smithville. That struck me as not really our best move in that it's been described in some quarters as the trail to nowhere, which is sort of the opposite of what my inclination is, which is, again, connect with existing assets and take full advantage of that. That seems to be the best bang for our buck. Another reason I think that we do need to be moving on this is that as we go forward doing this, we need to have right-of-way and that just becomes increasingly difficult. Obviously, our population has grown pretty substantially and as is reflected in the current or the most latest, the latest census figures, so we, the sooner we start getting these things in place, we get the right-of-way established and we start putting these in place, that, I, I think it's also a draw for, you know, more citizens to come make their homes here in Clay County so that they have that asset. That's what a lot of people, I think, in, in a younger demographic, certainly younger demographic than myself, are looking for, are those opportunities to be able to take advantage of a, of a trail system. Something that might be helpful is, to the degree that we can, is to get some of the agreements and some of the materials that you talked about to our, our counselor and to our administrator so that we can start. Basically, there's no point in reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd certainly want to see us be able to start participating in, in that manner. And then, I guess the final point I'd like to make is I like the idea of what Platte County is doing in that they are, are providing a sort of an umbrella for the other, for the municipalities, the other local governments in their county to sort of work under by using this grant program. One of the things that, again, I, I had promoted and was unsuccessful at was doing a similar kind of a, an operation as it applies to economic development, so the idea of doing something like that kind of follows a pattern that I think is a, I think works in a lot of different areas and certainly I think it's proven that it works in the area of trails and recreational facilities. So I think that's something that we really need to be, need to be looking at. And like I say, the fact that, that, you know, working with the City of Kansas City, the City of Kansas City constitutes just a little over half of the citizen population here in Clay County, so it's impossible to have a discussion of, of any scope without including Kansas City into the mix.
One of the things too, from the Platte County side, is the commission was very adamant at reducing future maintenance obligations for the county and so the grant program was basically set up that, you know, the county would provide the funding and then local municipalities would maintain the asset. And then one of the things that the Sales Tax Advisory Board recommended, you know, when we went for the renewal, was to limit the expenditure of those funds on new public buildings because of the, you know, future obligation and maintenance responsibilities. And so there was an effort and a desire from the county, Platte County Commission at the time, the current commission, that, you know, they did not want to increase the county's future obligations and so they were willing to partner and then the local municipalities would take up the maintenance.
I think that's an important issue that doesn't get mentioned enough and that is maintenance. And it's, it's that way in, in, in a lot of governmental expenditures and that is, it's not just the cost of putting a particular asset into place, but it's thinking in terms of what that future obligation is going to be to maintain them. Once you've, once you've established a trail or a road or anything like that, clearly after a certain period of time, the, the ability to not go forward without some substantial maintenance, it becomes, you know, quite an issue. So, that is something that we need to be looking at. Identifying a, a specific stream of revenue would not be a bad thing either. In Platte County, obviously, they've, they've gone the route of a, of a dedicated tax. Clearly, when we're looking at that, those, and trail system and expanding, those are, I think, two of the things we need to look at is a consistent source of revenue and also the ongoing cost of maintenance and how that is, how that is dealt with. So, I really look forward to working not only with, with the City of Kansas City, but also the, the other cities. I live in Gladstone and I very much appreciate the strides that they've made in putting together a, a really nice trail system that, then, it's part of a larger continuum that, that feeds into the park system, that feeds into so much more, the transportation assets because some people will not use them just for recreation but for other purposes. So, I, I think it's something that I'm extremely happy that Commissioner Carpenter has, has taken the lead on and hopefully we will be able to strengthen those, those ties, especially with Mark. I think that would be a fruitful partnership to cultivate even further. With that, did any of the commissioners have any further follow-up questions or anything like that? Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the time this morning. I look forward to it.
That concludes our discussion items for today. Under public hearings, there are none listed. We have no consent agenda items. That brings us to our first regular agenda item. I believe the first two are companion issues, 2021-222, 2021-223. Mr. Administrator, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-222 and 2021-223, a request to approve a subdivision replat of Lot 2 Providence de Dios Phase 1 and Lot 3 Providence de Dios Phase 2. And I'll turn the floor over to Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
This is Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a request for rezoning and final plat. I have the property pulled up on the screen. It currently is a, is two lots combined, they are roughly 32 acres. There's a large 20-plus acre lot highlighted in green here that's zoned agricultural. There's a roughly nine and a half acre lot in the orange that's zoned R1A. The proposal is to push this property line right here a little farther to the north and split this into two 5-acre lots. The large 20-acre lot would stay roughly the same and we'd have two, we're basically making two lots, three lots and each lot would be allowed to have one single-family residence. This is located off of Collins Road and 164th Street. Smithville Lake is just to the west of the subject property. I'll zoom out a little bit so you can see the general vicinity. It's located in the Natural Resources Tier, which allows a 5-plus acre lot, so we believe that each lot meets the minimum requirements. The two 5-acre lots would be required to have agricultural land preservations, which is just setting aside a portion of that lot where they could not build structures. This case was noticed in the Courier Tribune and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. It has five rezoning criteria that review and decision-making bodies should consider with any rezoning case. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals. We did receive some questions during Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know that I would call it opposition. There were questions about the types of houses that could be built, if the lots were to be sold and the lot, lot size requirements of Clay County, which, as I stated earlier, with the Natural Resources Tier, a 5-plus acre lot is allowed in this area. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the rezoning and final plat and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have and the applicant is present as well.
Are there any questions from the commission of, Mr. Jones?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, if the applicant would like to make any comments, certainly they're welcome to, it is not a requirement, but certainly we want to afford those who would be here to speak on the, on the application to have that opportunity, particularly those who are making application. Would the applicant like to make any kind of comment?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like, from the public, who would like to make comment on the issue? Very well, what we would be looking for then is a, we would move this to either consent or regular agenda next week with the, with the, with the approved box checked on 2021-223 and 222. So we would, the motion that would be, excuse me, not the motion, but the consideration is whether to put this on consent or regular agenda with the approved, as approved. So, with that, is there further discussion?
No, I think I'm good with consent on this one.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm comfortable with consent as well for approved.
Very well. We will put that, those two items on next week's consent agenda to be approved. That moves us to 2021-224. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-224, still relative to the Providence de Dios issue, to request to approve a utility easement for Lot 2 Providence de Dios. I'll turn the floor over to Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So we're talking the same property. Since we are moving this property line to the north, the request is to vacate the existing utility easement in this area. The new property line is roughly right here, and the new plat has a utility easement on the new property line, so there's no need for this existing utility easement. The current code requires that we put utility easements around the outside of each property, and we have done that on the plat. As part of any vacation request, we send out case studies to the adjacent property owners and utility providers, and we've received no objection to this case. The Clay County Highway Department, AT&amp;T, Platte Clay Electric, and Spire have all indicated that they have no objection to vacating this utility easement, and we received no opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of vacating this utility easement. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Jones?
No.
Seeing none, would the applicant care to comment? Once again, it's an option, not a requirement. Very well. With that, once again, I would be looking for consensus from the commission to put this either on regular or consent agenda for next week and to indicate it as approved. Commissioner Thompson?
I would do consent with approved.
Me as well.
Very well. 2021-224 will be put on next week's consent agenda marked as approved. By the way, before we go forward on this, what I want to make a comment on really quick, just for those who may be new to the commission, this is our work session. What we are doing is we are putting items on to be voted on next week. Consent agenda items will be voted on as a group because they are essentially non-controversial and do not, and do not include the expenditure of county monies. Regular agenda will be taken up at the next meeting and discussed, once again, in a similar manner as we are doing now, but with a separate vote. And any commissioner may, at any time prior to that vote, request to have something moved from consent onto our regular agenda. So I just wanted everybody to be a little up to speed on our procedures so there wouldn't be any expectations that, any expectations that were not valid. With that, that brings us to our next grouping of items. That's 2021-225, 226, and 227. Mr. Administrator, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-225, 2021-226, and 21227, combined request, all relative to the request to approve the subdivision Middleton Acres. And I will turn the floor over to Planning and Zoning.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a rezoning preliminary and final plat request for Middleton Acres. It is approximately 48 acres that the applicant is proposing to subdivide into five roughly nine-and-a-half acre lots. Got it pulled up on the screen. It is outlined in the yellow. This is WHB Road to the west, 92 Highway to the north, Ectonville Gas Station right here, C2. And there are a couple subdivisions located to the east of the subject property. So the request is to divide it from one lot to five roughly nine-and-a-half acre lots. This parcel is located in kind of a unique area. It sits right in between two of the tiers in the county comprehensive plan. It sits between the urban services tier and the natural resources tier. The natural resources tier allows a five-plus acre lot. The urban services tier requires a 10-plus acre lot. You can see we have a five-acre lot across the street, and then we've got two roughly nine-and-a-half acre lots to the north. So I think with us going roughly nine to 10 acres, we're matching what's been done in the area, and we're kind of blending between those two tiers in the comp plan. Another thing to consider is when Lakeside Meadows, which is just to the north, was platted, there was a 30-foot of right-of-way that was dedicated to the county. We are proposing to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way on the north side of Lot 1 to match that. In case these subdivisions to the east would ever be developed, a secondary access could be put in there if needed. This typically isn't the area of the county where we see interior-streated subdivisions, but it could happen in the future. This case was also noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. It has the same five rezoning criteria that review and decision-making bodies should consider. The applicant received all their outside agencies approvals. Highway Department has indicated that Lot 3 and 4 will need to have a shared access. And then, during the process, it was discovered that there is a pipeline easement and a Northwest Electric Power easement that cuts through the property. The surveyor didn't initially put that on the plat, but has added that to the plat. And we've reached out to both the pipeline company and the electric company to ask them for any additional comments. And you will see there are a couple conditions in Exhibit A that require that we get those comments before we record the plat. Also, the land development code requires that if we have five or more lots, that there be an interior street unless there is an exemption granted by the Clay County Highway Department or MoDOT. In this case, it was Clay County Highway Department, and they granted that exception to the applicant, so an interior street was not required. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning preliminary and final plat with the conditions you can see in Exhibit A. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is also present.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The only thing I see that, that causes me, any thoughts on this that would, I would want to have addressed, would be the easement that you talked about. Am I right that you are in the process, then, of working through that with the relevant entities on that?
Yes, sir. We have contacted both, both companies, and the surveyor was able to locate it and actually gave us an updated plat that showed both of those easements on the new plat.
The reason I ask is, should, should it be the will of the commission to put this on consent? I think that it would be advisable that if there is any change in that status or if that creates any complications, that the commission be notified. If there are no complications, I don't know that it's, it would be necessary for us to not take it up as consent. But certainly, if it does create any issues, I think the commission would like to be informed at the earliest moment so that we can consider whether or not it should remain on consent, should we put it there, or should it be moved to regular. But, I mean, right now, it feels like a consent agenda item to me, but I don't want to, I don't want to preclude that possibility in case there is something unexpected that comes up from this circumstance.
I would be happy to notice you of any changes. And I pulled up the plat, the current plat that shows that 50-foot-wide Statehood Oil Company easement in this area of the plat, and then the Northwest Electric easement in the farther east that just kind of cuts across the plat. With the lots being nine-and-a-half acres roughly each, you know, we're subdividing, subdividing this for one single-family house per lot. Having that easement across there isn't uncommon. That happens throughout the county, and there should be plenty of locations for them to be able to build one single-family house on the nine-and-a-half acres.
And I assume the applicant has been made aware of the, of this easement issue?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the commission for Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, I do have one quick question.
Please proceed.
Was there any opposition to this?
So I apologize for not mentioning that. I would not call it opposition. We had some neighbors attend the meeting. That's when, actually, the pipeline question was raised, because we weren't aware of it before the meeting. But it was basically discussion about that pipeline, and that it should be noted on the plat. But I would not call it opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just to follow up on Commissioner Thompson's question, would you, would you characterize, and obviously, we weren't there, would you characterize that more as informative and informational rather than either in support or opposition?
Yes. They had questions about the easement, and they did not indicate whether they were pro or against this subdivision, is my recollection.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions that the applicant, or any comments the applicant would like to make? Once again, it's not required, but if you'd like to make comment, you're certainly welcome to do so.
No, sir. The fact is, I do appreciate what you're doing for us, and we don't have to stop, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from any other citizens wishing to express views on this issue? If you do, please come to the podium. As I mentioned before, make sure the green light is on. Please be sure and identify yourself and speak into the microphone so that our audio recordings can pick up your comments.
Yes, I'm John McGee, and we're just to the south of this proposed development. And I will agree with Kip. I do not oppose this in any way, shape, or form. But I wanted, I guess, just understand, these are both permanent easements, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure if that's true for the pipeline easement.
Mr. Jones, I would, and I realize, when we have staff, they need to respond to questions from the commission, so I will ask that question in your place, and that is, Mr. Jones, do you agree with the, with the comment made by the gentleman at the podium?
Yes, I do. I think it's a permanent easement that will be noted on the plat, and if anything would, if it would ever be removed, it would have to go through the proper process to be vacated.
Thank you. Please proceed with your comments.
Fine, thank you. One question, if I may ask, too, before I forget. Lot 5 has that pond on the south border that actually encroaches, I guess, on the property that my brother owns. That was to be inspected. I don't know what that means. The dam is actually on Pat McGee's property. If and when it's inspected, are there consequences that would be required of both landowners?
Mr. Jones, could you address your answer to the commission, to, to the concern raised by the gentleman?
Yes, sir. So anytime we subdivide land, one of the steps we go through is having the ponds inspected. Now, we're only dealing with the portion of the pond that is on the proposed subdivision. So the property owner to the south would not be required to do anything, because the, it's through an agency called Natural Resources Conservation Service that does the inspections for us. And they will just look at the pond section that's on the proposed subdivision. And in, in my six years, I think we've had two or three where they've had to remove some brush in certain areas or do some minor repair. But typically, it's, it's more of a formality, especially with a pond this size, with it being so small. I don't expect it to be, have any issues.
But once that's inspected and it's blessed as such, then that new owner of Lot 5 could, and that's right, to understand that he could fill in, stop the drainage and all that, and that pond basically disappears, which is just FYI, I guess.
Do you have any further thoughts on that issue, Mr. Jones?
So I would agree that, yes, the new owner of Lot 5 could do some work on their property that could affect the neighbor to the south since they share that pond.
Okay.
If we were plating both properties, we would not allow that property line to go through the pond. But since we're not, that's allowed to go through there because it exists that way now. What really should happen, and if you're interested in working with the applicant, is there should be a pond maintenance agreement that should be drawn up between yourself and any future owner of Lot 5 that would address what can and can't be done with that pond. I, I can't require that because your property is not being subdivided. But that's really, in my opinion, what should be done to make sure there's no issues in the future.
But that would be between the applicant and the owner to the south. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that, thank you very much.
The only question I have, Mr. Jones, is, is that something that, is it more appropriately left to the, to when that transaction happens, to the private parties? Or is that, I understand you're saying that that's not something that we can require. I suppose it could be put in as a condition, but what is, since you've been down this road on other issues, I'm sure, in your history here, what are your thoughts on that particular matter?
Well, I would be happy to, to, you know, broker those conversations between the true property owners. But I, my opinion is, since we're not subdividing the property to the south, I don't think it should be a requirement or a condition of the plat.
In that case, it sounds to me like, like what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is not something we would be dealing with specifically at this time, but that certainly your office would be willing to act as a resource to the property owners should they decide to go down that road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We would have some templates for some agreements that we could pass along to them, and they would just need to enter into that agreement and record that agreement on their own.
And my gut feeling is that would, that would be a, I think, a very good recommendation, although not a requirement, just to make sure that any future disputes were not, where we're headed off, I guess. So perhaps it's a, it's just a recommendation on our part, but not by any means a requirement or anything else to go forward on this particular transaction.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further comments from the other commissioners? Is there a, an inclination as far as consent or regular session from the commission on this?
I'm good with consent, and I think it was well said by you that if we get new information in the next week, that we could always pull it off if we need to.
I think that is reasonable. Commissioner Thompson?
I agree. That would be my suggestion as well.
Very well. Items number 2021, 25, 26, and 27 will appear on the consent agenda next week with the indication that it be approved. That moves us to, thank you very much, by the way. That brings us to 2021-228. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 21-228 is to approve an RFP number 42-21, a term and supply contract with Alfred Van Ness and Company, CFS Engineers McClure, Petrofore Engineering and Design, and Beenster and Kim, Inc., for an on-call civil engineering services. This is a request from Planning and Zoning, and I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Jones with Planning and Zoning for further comment.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So we sent out an RFP for our on-call engineer. We formed a committee, and we received 10 responses. The committee scored those responses, and we have basically tried to accept five, the top five scores on those responses. This is typically used when we have an interior-streated subdivision where we need an on-call engineer to review the construction plans and to possibly do some onsite inspections for planning and zoning. So it's not something that's used every year, and it is typically something that is reimbursed by the, by the developer of that project. So the, the engineering firm builds planning and zoning, and then the developer reimburses the county for the engineering costs associated with their development. And I would be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from the commission of Mr. Jones on this issue?
No, just thank you to Mr. Jones. It's like an important thing to do. Thank you.
Is there a recommendation as far as council goes on, because this is a contract, is there a recommendation that we go with regular agenda because it does involve, although it's a pass-through, it is the expenditure of county monies?
I guess I'm always hesitant to give recommendations. I mean, I think this would be fine to put on consent, given that it's on-call and that it is in the nature of the agreement, but also... agreement, but I also want to be aware that the commission ultimately could end up in dollars spent, and regular would be fine as well.
Okay, then I almost asked that question in terms of historical precedent of what we have done in the past.
Typically, we would do this on consent, but.
Okay, with that caveat, then, yeah, I just want to kind of get, sorry, get your read on that. I am fine with 2021-228 being on consent. What is the opinion?
Yeah, I am as well. I mean, this doesn't lock us into any guaranteed spending under a contract, just as on-call, as was mentioned, so I'm perfectly fine putting it on consent.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you, yes.
Very well. You are also comfortable with that, therefore, 2021-228 will be on next week's agenda under consent. That brings us to 2021-229 and 230. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-229, excuse me, and 2021-230 are both associated with the appointment of a new Clay County Public Administrator. This makes its way to us from the courts who met and bonk and identified the individual that they would like to submit for appointment. It is the commission's responsibility to affirm that appointment, so that's why that is characterized that way. And then secondarily, upon approval, there is another issue of approving a bond for that particular office. I'm not sure if anybody is here from the courts to speak to that. Please, if you don't mind, identify yourself.
First off, good morning. My name is Paimon Aranju, and I serve as the Assistant County Counselor. One of my responsibilities is to represent the public administrator. Just to give the commissioners some history, about midway towards the end of July, we had notice of resignation of the current public administrator, and I'm sincerely sad this year ago. I think there were some opportunities that presented themselves that required her to leave in short order. The court had an opportunity to either interview applicants or, of course, pick somebody within the public administrator's office. The person that they've proposed, Alexa Summit, is a great candidate. I've had an opportunity to work with her for a couple of years now, and prior to serving in the role, worked with her in my private capacity as well. She would have liked to be here, but of course, with the pandemic, there's things that come up that prevent people from being here. She's been with the Office of the Public Administrator since 2008. I think she's a great candidate, and I come here with full support of her appointment. What's exciting is that this morning, I think, is the first utilization of the new constitution in which we're appointing what was a previous elected official. And so I was excited, and I've been interested to see how the process has worked out so far. It's been working pretty well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of the witness?
No.
No, you're right. This is, and this is a rather unique, we've had some resignations in other elected offices that will be transferring on to appointing offices when the new constitution is fully implemented. This position is unique in that it obviously outlines a role for the judiciary in this matter, so certainly that's one of the things that makes this distinctive. And given the interaction with the judiciary, it seems appropriate that that role be played by that body. I think this is something we need to go forward with, obviously, to make this happen because of the fact that we're dealing with a, well, two reasons. One, the fact that we're dealing with an appointment into an important post. And secondarily, since we have the bond approval, my thought is to put this on regular. I think when we're going to put somebody in this position of responsibility, I think it's appropriate for us to give it individual attention going forward. That doesn't at all affect the timeliness of having this position taken up, and it indicates no lack of support. It's just, I think procedurally, this might be our better route.
I understand. I think the only question I'd have then would be a timeline. The, one of the concerns was if the new public administrator suggested would be able to be bonded, Alexa Summit is able to be bonded, and that's the second resolution to take up. The issue is that Sarah Mills-Rodgers' resignation is effective the 30th of this month, and so a decision, of course, would need to be made before then so that we could get successor letters and to get letters issued to all current interested parties.
The decision would be made pretty much regardless of whether it was consent or regular. The decision would be made, at least it's a contemplation, is the decision would be made at the August 25 meeting. So the decision to go either consent or regular has no effect on the actual timeline itself. Perfect. Please, go ahead, Mr. Counselor.
If it's approved on Wednesday, the 25th, which would be a week from yesterday, does that give travelers enough time to get everything in place on the bond before Sarah leaves on the 30th?
As far as I know, I think the previous concern was application and then timeline, waiting to see if she could be approved. I think now that we know that she can be approved, there's nothing that I'm currently aware of that would prevent that from being workable timeline.
Okay.
Should that present a problem and a gap, you know, certainly we have the ability to meet in an emergency manner, but as long as our regular meeting agenda or meeting schedule will accommodate what we need to do, I think we'd like to keep on that track. But certainly, if there's a circumstance that we're unaware of right now, we can move, you know, in a different way to make sure that we don't have a gap in service. As we go forward, just, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a very quick thumbnail, not necessarily for the commission, but just for the folks here from the public and who are listening, what the public administrator does just to underscore the importance of that role in county government.
Yeah, I'll try not to exaggerate their role too much, but I personally feel as though they're sort of a secret superhero of society. There's a number of individuals that, for any number of reasons, are unable to meet their own needs, financial needs, placement needs, food, shelter, and the list goes on. And what happens is that those people who have nobody who's either fit or willing to care for them, need somebody else to care for them. And the public administrator's role is to really step in and provide the care that those individuals can't provide for themselves. I think currently, there's roughly 300 wards, which means that they're meeting the needs of a lot of people. We receive applications for public administrator pretty frequently, several a month, and these are individuals with various needs. And absent the public administrator's role in society to meet their needs, they end up either being homeless, going in and out of hospitals, passing away, any number of harm results from them not serving in that capacity.
Yes, Mr. Counselor.
Commissioners, if I may, I might ask Ms. Summitt to come up and talk as well on this. Just had a brief conversation. It does sound like timing is going to get tight. So if it passes next Wednesday, and it'll be next Wednesday night, Ms. Rodkers leaves on Monday, the 30th. My understanding is, you know, we talked about those 300 wards, but more importantly, on a procedural level, that's 300 bank accounts. And each one of those would require this approval before that change can happen. Is that fair? And if we approve this next Wednesday night, that essentially gives you two days, Thursday and Friday?
If I can shed some light on the process just a little bit, what happens is when somebody is appointed as guardian or conservative of a ward, the court issues letters. Those letters is what gives that individual authority to make the decisions and to take care of the financial accounts. When we have a transition, the public administrator's office, the staff at the courthouse, quite literally, has to draft amended letters for every single ward. And the practical result of that is that these wards are placed most commonly in this area, but theoretically all over the state. And those letters need to go out to each of those placements. They also, by virtue of the conservatorship, have accounts of different bank accounts, our financial institutions, those amended letters have to get out to those as well. So I think that's the predicament that they would be in, but I don't know, I don't know that I can offer a solution to that. I think the commission would have to give us that solution.
Well, so where I was heading with that is, given the constitution's, I think, obligation on to the commission as to who to pick, and the fact that I think the bond is in place and ready to be approved with travelers, I would perhaps suggest that the commission consider this on first reading today for approval. That would give them much more time all of next week to maybe do some of these things that will need to be done.
Actually, you kind of anticipated what I was going to be asking you next, so, yeah, I think our minds are going along the same lines. I think, you know, certainly that has been raised with the commissioners. What I'd like to do is allow them a few moments to think about it, and while they're doing that, if Ms. Summers, Summit, excuse me, would like to come forward and just kind of give us a little bit of her background, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, Ms. Summit's not here just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I got mixed up. Apologize.
Ms. Pilgrim, though, she has been with the public administrator's office for some time as well. She has more information as far as Alexa's background. I will say, just so you're aware, the individuals that are virtually participating is the past public administrator, Alexa herself. Sarah, you have full support from everybody who's involved in this process that Alexa's more than capable to contribute and fill this role.
Okay, and certainly we want to extend our gratitude towards Ms. Mills for the years of service she's put in on that post. It's a, you know, quite honestly, it is a very difficult job. If there's a, there are a number of difficult jobs in county government, and that has got to rank as one of the most challenging jobs that we ask individuals to undertake for the county and for its citizens. I don't know that, would the commission like to now consider, as the counselor has just outlined, approving this today? What are your thoughts, Commissioner Carpenter?
My thoughts are yes. I think we ought to do that. You know, this is a very important position, as has been discussed. I had a number of opportunities over the years to talk with one of our former administrators, Debbie Gwynn, and she has articulated very well the significance and importance of this role, and getting the person into place in a timely fashion is absolutely a thing we should do. I am grateful to the process that led to Ms. Summit being selected, folks with expertise in the area. I think that was the right way to go, and I am happy to confirm her, along with my other commissioners, today. I do have one quick question for, kind of counsel, if, and apologize for putting you on the spot, but just for the sake of posterity, I am curious in terms of who has authority for filling a vacancy in this role. We've sort of delegated it to the folks who, through the courts and who work in this area. Is it the position of the commission, though, just, you know, again, for the sake of posterity, that that is, that they have the authority in this regard, or do we believe that that rests with the commission?
So it's a little, so the way the constitution was written, there's a general belief that the courts are probably better situated to know who the public administrator should be. In Jackson County, for example, the courts do that. However, the public administrator's a county employee, and there's some state statutes involved about who can supervise a county employee versus state employee. So ultimately, this person is a county employee under the county commission. But the way that the constitution is written is that the court may, is empowered to pick a successor or a person for this position, and if that's done, then the county commission shall appoint that person. So if the courts decide to take up that authority, then the county commission shall pick that person. If the courts, for whatever reason, chose not to, then I think it would be your place to pick that person. But in any scenario, this person remains a county employee under the county commission and the county administrator.
Understood. Thank you. And again, I do think that's the correct way to go about selecting the replacement for this role, just wanting to get some clarity on that. And in terms of the shall there, if we were to hypothetically vote no, would that be a violation of the shall, or what's the idea there?
I would say yes. I mean, I think this is a mostly ministerial appointment, once the court has elected to take the authority that's given to them under the constitution.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have any questions as we go forward on this?
No questions. I feel comfortable moving forward with this. We did receive, you know, the recommendation from our county court judges recommending Ms. Summit for this position, so I'm happy to make the motion, if we need to, to go ahead and approve.
Let me go ahead, and before you do that, and I also want to make sure that you're okay with us doing this alternate route. Let me get clarity from the county counselor as far as, do we need any kind of a suspension of the rules or any of that?
We do not. We just need a motion to approve, and if it's unanimous, it can be approved today.
And will I be voting on that?
I believe not.
Okay.
As I recall.
Because if there was a tie, that would no longer be unanimous.
It would not be unanimous, and it would not necessarily fail, it would fail today.
Gotcha.
It could not be voted on in a single meeting. It could be passed next week, but it could not be voted on or passed today.
Okay.
And one of the, since I've got the floor, one other quick thing. On 230, which is up right now, any motion to approve 229 and 230, I would request that on 230, in the very last sentence where it says "voting in the majority," that those four words be removed to make it consistent with our other resolutions that we pass, and just to allow, if it's the presiding commissioner that happens to be here and needs to sign documents, that that could happen.
That doesn't bother me. That seems, it doesn't seem to affect the underlying issue or to change any of the timeline.
Most of our resolutions don't have that language, but I did notice that we did.
So I guess the first thing we want to do is, I guess we could combine that so that Commissioner Thompson can either make a motion to amend 2021-230, vote on that, and then move on to another motion, or, I mean, she'd make a motion for passage and then make an amendment to, make a motion to amend it, to remove those four words, and then we would vote from there. Is that the procedure of your vision?
That's fine, yeah.
I'm sorry, I kind of bobbled that a little bit. Commissioner Thompson, do you feel comfortable with the amount of detail you've been given?
No, I think we'll give it a go.
Great, please proceed.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-229 as printed. I'll approve that. And then 221-230 as amended, removing voting in the majority.
Do you feel comfortable with that language?
Yeah, that'll work.
Motion has been made regarding 2021-229, 2021-223. Discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
No discussion. Thank you.
Very well. Are there any other discussion, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Very well, that issue is passed, and that will obviously not be appearing on next week's agenda.
Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way, to our new public administrator. With that, that brings us to 2021-214. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-214 is to approve a sole source vendor, that being Keystone Public Safety, Inc., for annual software maintenance. This is a request of the sheriff and Captain Agdarian. Captain Agdarian is here to make comments.
Please proceed.
Good morning, commissioners. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Just wanted to shut the door. It was loud from where I was sitting over there, so.
Is that, I'm sorry, are we allowed to shut the door in an open meeting?
That's a good question.
I think we probably need to leave it open.
I don't mean this to turn it on.
It's unlocked, but I think we probably.
Okay, if we want to open it, it was very loud when I was sitting across the room.
Oh, just push the green button. There you go.
Okay. This resolution for the sole source vendor for Keystone Public Safety is something that we approach the commission with annually. Keystone is the records management system of the sheriff's office, and essentially, I refer to it as the brain because it is the repository of pretty much every record the sheriff's office has for civil process, for warrants, for our reporting in the, within the sheriff's office. And this is software that we have been using since, well, the first report was taken in 2003, so we've had it for a minute. Yeah, so we just want to make sure that we are following protocol by bringing it to you as a sole source. And, yeah, that's where we find ourselves.
Great. And this, okay, I'm sorry.
No.
So, yeah, the sole source was approved under Resolution 2021-88, I think is what I'm reading here in the materials. So that's already been established, so we don't have to concern ourselves with that. It's already been acknowledged to be sole sourced. All right, and I'm assuming, since we're going for a renewal, that the sheriff's department is happy with the service they're receiving?
Yes, the sheriff's office is happy with the service that we've received over the period of time and currently. I, just to be fully transparent with the commission, this provider has, we have been utilizing them for a number of years, and it is likely that in future years, we will be. is likely that in future years, we will be looking at a system to replace Keystone, but that is a conversation for, you know, down the line. It will be an incredibly labor-intensive and time-consuming process to switch RMS providers, but right now, Keystone is the best product that we have moving forward to maintain day-to-day operations of the Sheriff's Office. So I just want to be transparent that when we come to you and say, hey, this is a sole source for this vendor, and then in the future, come back and say, hey, we're looking to replace the vendor, I just want you to know why we're coming to you with a sole source now. And likely, in the future, there will be a discussion of some, some replacement programming, but we're not there yet.
Very good.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the, the Commission? Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue, seeing none? This does involve the expenditure of money. I'm thinking regular agenda for next week. Is that a?
I agree. Yep.
Very well. 2021-214 will be on next week's regular agenda. Thank you very much. That brings us to another sheriff's issue, it looks like, 2021-232.
Commissioners, this 2121-232 is to approve the attached amendment on this resolution for a school resource deputy program with the North Kansas City School District. Again, a sheriff's request, and Captain Agdarian will make further comment.
Please proceed.
Right. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This request is a request to amend the resolution that was passed by the Commission in July of this year for the 2021-2022 North Kansas, school year. It's an MOU between the Sheriff's Office and the North Kansas City School District to provide school resource deputies for that district. That was what was passed in July. After that passed, the North Kansas City School District and the Sheriff's Office engaged in a conversation about adding additional school resource personnel to the district. And after some discussions with the school district, the Sheriff's Office, and the Children's Fund, as I, as I understand it, the Children's Fund was identified as a funding source to fund these four positions entirely. So while our current MOU requires a shared payment for those personnel between the county and the district, the Children's Fund will cover the cost of the salary and benefits for those four personnel in their entirety, and they will submit a monthly payment to the county. They'll invoice.
Right. That sounds very good.
Okay. Yeah?
Are there any questions?
It's exciting.
No. No, no questions, other than, yeah, thank you. It sounds like a, a great use of, of those funds, and no additional dollars added to the county, too, which is always good, and hopefully, you know, provide additional resources and protection to our, our kids in North Kansas City schools. So, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. I think this is great, and it's wonderful that we don't have to spend any additional county money on it, and that money is going to, to good use, as Commissioner Carpenter pointed out, so, but thank you for bringing this forward.
And I will gladly provide you all with a detailed dollar figure when that becomes available, but right now, it's my understanding that Children's Fund has authorized up to $350,000 to cover the cost of these four personnel for each year. But we don't have specific people plugged into these roles yet. We are still finalizing the identification process for them.
Wonderful.
Very well. Is there any comment from anyone in the public on this issue, seeing none? It seems to me that this is, involves the savings of money, not the expenditure of money, so in my mind, it would certainly be appropriate for consent agenda, but I'm certainly looking for the opinions of the other Commissioners.
Agreed.
I agree.
Very well. There seems to be a universal agreement. 2021-232 will appear on next week's consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for the presentation. That brings us to 2021-217. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-217 is another request for approval on first read. This is to approve an amendment to a relationship with Harris Local Government Solutions, Inc. It comes from the Assessor, and Mr. Baldwin from the Assessor's Office is here to add additional comments and further explanation.
And I want to point out, the Administrator did indicate this, but to Commissioners, that this is something that it has recommended that we vote on today to approve because of a time limit. This issue that I'm sure we will be hearing more about. So with that, would you please proceed, Mr., I was going to say Deputy Assessor. Is that still the correct term?
Well, you're still correct. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Baldwin, Assessor-Elect and current Deputy Assessor. I'm here to speak on the amendment to the contract for our Harris govern, which Harris contract amendment is amended because the original contract was for a joint with the Collector's Office, personal property, and our real estate. Decisions were made that we didn't do any of the collection department and the personal property. We just used it as a real, real estate source. So the contract has been amended, and I do respectfully request that it is approved today, if possible, because of the time limit. We've dealt with this kind of back and forth for about a year now, so we would like to get this done before the current Assessor, Kathy Reinhardt, leaves. So I'm here for any questions you may have on this.
Very well. Are there any questions?
No questions. Just thank you to Ms. Pilgrim.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have one question for County Council. Do you feel comfortable with this moving forward, if it needs to be voted on today, and?
I do. It certainly has been, I mean, I don't want to, I'm comfortable with it. I can't speak to the urgency as much as, as Mr. Baldwin can, but it is something that's been brewing. It needs to get done, and I think it'll, going forward, I think we'll work through these issues a little better going forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you feel comfortable with this going forward today?
I do.
Okay.
If I could add something to that, Commissioner. With that, I do feel that we did do some amendment to the contract. After we've done some adjustments, we've got, got some future development that has, as credit towards what we originally purchased. And after the amendment is all done and said, I still think we got a tremendous deal for what we purchased. And this is, I'm going to steal the Sheriff's Department comment on this, but this is kind of the brain of our real estate. So this is our assessment, CAMA system, mobile data, and our software that we use in the office for any kind of assessment for real estate.
One further comment. There's no expenditure of any dollars involved in any of this?
Thank you. That was, that was something, it was kind of on my mind. Thank you, Mr. Administrator, for pointing that out. Very well. Are there any comments from the public on this issue, seeing none? If it, if a Commissioner would like to make a motion for the approval of 2021-217 as opposed to moving it to the next meeting, that would be in order. Anybody have such a motion to make?
I move that we approve 2021-217.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-217. Discussion? Commissioner Thompson?
No discussion. Thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Carpenter, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Twenty-one, excuse me, 2021-217 has been passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That brings us to 2021-219. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-219 is to approve revised contracts for collection of taxes for cities within Clay County. Some additional names, this time, city of North Kansas City, the Village of Clay Tomo, and the Village of Pratersville. The Collector is here. Would any additional comments?
Please proceed.
Barbara Riley, thank you, Commissioners and Administrator, for hearing me. These are just additional contracts, the same as the others that have been approved. We bring these to you for approval. Please.
Right. So what you're saying is these are, is these are, is essentially a second, or an additional batch of what we passed?
These are just additional batches, yes. And we'll have a few more. They're slowly coming in as the cities have their meetings and approvals. They're slowly coming in.
I'm glad you pointed that out, so that, I want to make sure that the public is aware of the reason they're being passed in this fashion is clearly, there has to be an approval process, which each municipality would be going through, and as they complete that process, we are passing them as we go along.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Very good. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Is there any comment or question from anyone from the public? Seeing none. I think we have been putting these on consent in the past, or have we?
Yes.
I believe, yeah.
I thought it was regular.
Was it regular? I mean, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to go with whatever we've been doing up to this point.
Consent. We've done all of them by consent up to now.
Okay.
Bye, I'm sorry.
We've done all of them by consent up to now.
Okay. That being the case, is there, is there an opinion to be expressed from the Commission as far as consent or regular agenda for next week?
I, I support consent. I mean, these are identical to the ones we've been passing in the past, so I'm comfortable with consent, certainly.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought, too. I just want to make sure we were being consistent as we went along. Commissioner Thompson?
No, I'm comfortable with that.
Very well. 2021-219 will go on next week's consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to, excuse me a moment, 2021 Ordinance 31, and it is, it got a companion issue in 2021-221. Mr. Administrator?
As you stated, the companion issue, 2021-Ordinance 31, is to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year, and at the same time, 2021-221 is to approve the attached Memorandum of Understanding for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program 2.0 with First Call Technology and Community, and that involves Community Care Link, Carney and Richmond Council, the Metro Lutheran Ministry, Northland Healthcare Access, and the United Way of Greater Kansas City. This is, both of these are from the Auditor, who is here to make additional comments.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yes, Commissioner, this is Victor Hurlbert, again, Clay County Auditor. Before you is Ordinance 2021, Ordinance 31. It's essentially to reappropriate the rental program second phase, or 2.0 dollars. There's a new breakout with the 2.0, which is from the American Rescue Plan. Remember, the 1.0 is from Consolidated Appropriations Act at the end of last year. And so the difference is essentially, this time, it's an 85% program split and 15% available for admin. And so that's what this is doing, to set up that control, to make sure that we don't go over those limits, and to appropriate it as such. We have only received 40% of what we are allocated for the 2.0 rental funds of $1.1 million, and then we reappropriate the, that revenue into those two expenditure buckets. So that is what this is for. And I will say quickly, I'm glad the Public Administrator's Office is here. This is something that U.S. Treasury Department has mentioned, that we could work with our court system better to share this information. It's a lot of money available, this rental assistance dollars. For our 1.0 program, we have had $1.6 million so far, and so we continue to make progress, and that's just something I, I'm interested in, in getting that word out better to our court system, so.
Very well. Are there any questions of the Auditor, yeah, Auditor on this issue? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just to, again, offer my sincere thanks for your leadership on this issue. We here in Clay County are doing, frankly, a much better job than, than what the average other governmental entities are around the state and country in terms of distributing these funds. We've gotten a much higher percentage of our round one money out the door than, for example, the state of Missouri and many other political subdivisions. And so I know your leadership on this issue has been a big part of that, as well as, of course, the wonderful nonprofit partners that we've been working with have been doing a great job. And, you know, more work to be done. There's a lot of additional dollars still to get out to, to people in need, especially as the conversation continues to, to evolve around the eviction moratorium. And so I'm just proud that here in Clay County, we're doing a pretty good job of getting these dollars out the door, and thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also like to echo the comments of, of Commissioner Carpenter. I think that it, it certainly reflects a great deal of credit on, on the county government, but in particular, you, Mr. Auditor, to have kind of taken point on this issue and made sure that we are operating at the high level that we are. And I, I think it just shows, again, what a county government can be doing when we, when we cooperate with one another and keep the public good in mind, and, and go with that purpose in, in the forefront of our minds. With that, are there any comments from anyone else in the public? I don't believe it's really talking about, I, I don't believe this has anything to do with any additional expenditures of money.
It's really just a, a budget reallocation item. The, the next item, Resolution 2021-221, does, it does involve, well.
That's true, it is.
It does, yeah.
Well, I guess where I was going with that was, it crossed my mind that it would be good to put it on regular agenda, just to give us a chance to talk about it a bit more, because I think every time that we can make the point that we are, are, are putting these monies out there as they were intended to be put out there, and also as an additional advertisement for those who qualify to take advantage of it, I'm thinking regular agenda is really our, our best route. Is that the consensus of the Commission?
I agree.
Agreed. Thanks.
Very well. So 2021 Ordinance 31 and 2021-221 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-215. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-215 is to approve a revocable, revocable, say it with me, revocable, event license for Professional Disc Golf Association, Smithville Thrill, the Disc Golf Tournament. That is a request of Parks, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz is here to add further comment.
Well, I'm tempted to put this on regular agenda, just to make you have to.
Just so I say it again. I object.
Please proceed, Deputy Administrator.
Good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is a request from our Professional Disc Golf Association. This is a charity event they would like to hold. It is a fundraiser for autism and for, to help assist with first responders' suicide prevention.
Thank you very much. It's an obvious worthy cause. Anybody with, with a person that has autism in their family would certainly be very, very much in favor of this. And also, since you mentioned it, that the Sheriff's Department as well, that they recently have, were the recipients of some kits that they now carry to help alleviate the anxiety when they are on a call, if there is a person there who is suffering from autism. So that, this is something that is certainly at the, at the forefront of a lot of our minds. With that, obviously, very worthy cause. We do a lot of worthy things, but this is certainly among the best. Comments from the Commission or questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Only question I have is, this is the first year, isn't it? Is this one of our new events?
Yes, this is.
Wonderful.
We've had the Disc Golf, but this is the first time as a benefit.
Wonderful. Well, no, I am very excited for this, and I think this is, like Commissioner Nolte said, this is a very worthy cause, and I'd be very much in support of this, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just that I agree. Thank you.
Very well. Is it the opinion of the Commission that this should go on consent or regular for next week?
Consent.
Agreed.
I will, in spite of the entertainment value of the, of the Administrator pronouncing all the words, I will also agree consent. Sorry, we had to give you, we had to use you for a punching bag at some point. 2021-215 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to, to, excuse me, now I'm doing it. It's contagious. 2021-216, Mr. Administrator, please proceed. And I will not make fun of you anymore, because that was my payback.
That's okay. This is your dream come true. So, because I'm going to do it again. Commissioners, 2021-216 is to approve a revocable event license. The Julia Bargman-Hope Foundation, the 11th Annual Julia's Warriors Run for Hope, a 5K run and a one-mile walk event, again, requested by Parks. Deputy Administrator Kuntz?
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator for Facilities. Yes, this is an ongoing annual event for the Julie Bargman Foundation. Julie Bargman was a lifetime Smithville resident and a teacher in the Smithville School District. She suffered and battled cancer for 14 years, and this foundation was formed to help support breast cancer awareness and funding. And they are seeking to hold their event once again.
Very good. Once again, another very worthy cause. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. It appears that this is It appears that this is similar to our last issue and should go on consent. Is that agreeable?
Totally agree.
Very well. Twenty twenty-one dash two one six will appear on next week's consent agenda. Thank you very much, Deputy Administrator. That brings us to twenty twenty-one two two O. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one dash two two O is to approve an IFB number thirty-eight dash twenty-one with Boone Construction Company for a bridge replacement on Greenwood Road over the Fishing River. This would be Bridge two oh six zero zero one zero. It's a BRO project. This is from the Highway Department, and Deputy Administrator Walters is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administration. Bring to you Resolution twenty twenty-one two twenty is a bridge replacement on Greenwood Road south of Excelsior Springs, about two, two and a half miles. It's been closed for a while, and is an eighty-twenty bridge that will be presented through the COP, plus the twenty percent will be done through a soft match that we already have credited to us. So basically, we're going to have a free bridge.
Yeah, a free, free bridge sounds really, really good. Something else that occurs to me, well, first off, could you give us, and obviously we on the commission note, but could you give us just a, a brief explanation on the BRO program, just so the, the public would have a better understanding?
Yeah, the BRO is a bridge replacement off system that is done through the county, and what happens is, we get credited money each year for that, for the percentage of bridges that we have in Clay County. And then we take that money and apply it towards the bridges that are deficient in Clay County, provided we have the money to turn around and replace it completely as eighty percent. And if we don't, we let it build up to a certain amount. If we have a bridge that has to be replaced, then where we go to a soft match money, where we get MoDOT's approval so that we can to, turn around and put it into a soft match funding.
I appreciate the explanation and the, you know, when we're talking about things like soft match and all that, I realize that it gets a little bit deep in the woods. And certainly, we appreciate your expertise in this matter, making sure that we are able to come out at the end of the process with, I will say it again, a free bridge. It also feels as though that we are, are doing a better job of getting more bridges built in this county, more, more replacement of those that are in need of either repair or replacement. Is that pretty much the sense of where we're at?
Yeah, we're, we're making our mark. I believe we're, we're getting in the right direction to turn around and get these bridges back in functional position. I mean, we still have some low ton bridges out there that keep the buses and, and larger vehicles from passing over, but we're working on to turn around and get that changed around. So as of right now, with three bridges that we have going, it's a good start for us to...
I appreciate that, and I think the, the county's progress on this, on this important issue, this is obviously one of the basic responsibilities of our local government, is the maintenance and construction of roads and bridges. So certainly, we appreciate you making sure that we are moving forward as quickly as possible and as, as cost effectively as possible.
Right.
Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Thompson?
I have one quick question, but I will say, I never get tired of seeing you appear, Mr. Walters, because every time you do, you come and you tell me about bridges and replacement, and then when you say free, I love it, love it. So I never get tired of seeing you. So my quick question would be, is what, what timeline are we looking at for the replacement of this bridge?
As soon as we get this approved, then it'll go to MoDOT to get a proceed on it, and then knowing what Boone County's timeline is for them to turn around and start, and then the finish, I think it's a three hundred and sixty-five day, but usually it comes before that.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, I love seeing the progress we're making on the bridges and, and fixing these up and making it safer for our county, so.
Yes.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just thank you to Mr. Walters. I too love seeing Mr. Walters up in the podium. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none. I think this would be, as much as I'd love to talk about it again, this is probably okay for consent unless there's another, what do you think, Mr. Administrator?
It's an expenditure of funds.
Okay, well, yeah, you're right. All right. No, no, I stand corrected. I just got a little carried away with the moment. So twenty twenty-one, if it's the will of the commission, would, twenty twenty-one two two O would be on next week's regular agenda?
Sounds good to me. Thanks.
Thank you. That brings us to twenty twenty-one two one eight. Please proceed.
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one two one eight is to respond to a mandate from the Missouri Ethics Commission to establish and identify decision-making public servants. Those, in this case, would be all elected officials, the chief budget officer, purchasing agent of the county, and the general counsel, if employed full-time. This is from, again, this is a commission action mandated by the Missouri Ethics Commission.
It sounds like what we're basically doing is just adopting what is now in-state statute to...
Yeah, that, that's correct.
So it's really kind of ministerial.
This should be done annually. I don't know if it has been, but yeah, it is. It's certainly ministerial.
It does.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No, thank you.
Is there a, what is the thought as far as, as consent or regular agenda?
I'm comfortable with consent.
I agree.
Very well. Then twenty twenty-one two one eight will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to twenty twenty-one two three one. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one dash two three one is a request, again, from the commission to approve the naming of sixteen West Franklin Building, the former Bank Liberty Central Bank Building, in honor of former commissioner, former senator, former, I think there's at least one other thing I'm leaving out.
City Councilman.
City Councilman, thank you very much. Edward E. Quick, again, a submission by the commission to discuss a proper way to recognize Mr. Quick.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something that I requested to be put on the agenda. As we, as we go forward and, and now that we have acquired that building, it seemed to me that something, that some appropriate designation be made. The reason that, that Edward Quick came to my mind was, he reflects a very long history of service to Clay County, someone who, who has, has really, you know, made this county what it is. Something else that occurs to me is, is he reflects a time before some of the more recent conflicts, I think a time that we would, we would do well to strive to get back to where, where individuals can disagree without, without it becoming a permanent feature of county government. So I, not only is he a worthy recipient, but I, I think that it harkens to a, a time that we would do well to, to try to emulate, and I believe in large part we are, in fact, going down that road. Just to give a little bit of, of history, Ed Quick was born in nineteen thirty-five. He enlisted at seventeen in the U.S. Navy, and he was involved in the Korean conflict from nineteen sixty-five to seventy-five. He was with the KCMO Fire Department as a firefighter. In nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-five, he was on the Kansas City City Council, first district, which was obviously Clay County. From eighty-five to two thousand and five, he was in the U.S., excuse me, he was in the Missouri Senate. He became the Majority Leader. He was President Pro Tem of the Senate, and he was Minority Leader. My understanding is he was the only senator in Missouri history to hold all three of those positions, so that's obviously quite an accomplishment. From two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, he was the Presiding Commissioner of Clay County. So that's, that's a very brief snapshot of, of Ed's history with the county, obviously reciting just, just the accomplishments, doesn't necessarily do justice to the service that any individual does to this county. I'm going to ask that we put this on for regular agenda, mainly for the purpose of having Mrs. Quick join us and also expressing some of her thoughts. Clearly, there is no controversy, I think, in acknowledging Mr. Quick's, Senator Quick, Commissioner Quick, I don't know what title he would end up with, but with Ed Quick's accomplishments. So like I say, I think it, it, I think this accomplishes two purposes, both of which I think are, are certainly advisable for us to go forward on. With that, I'll open the floor for any other comments. Commissioner Carpenter?
Just that I think this is a fantastic idea. You know, as we've acquired this new building that has been known to folks in the community, you know, as the Bank Liberty Building, Central Bank Building, et cetera, I think it, it makes sense for us to attach a Clay County name to it, and I can't think of a better one than Ed Quick. You know, you mentioned his service here locally on the city council, as well as on the county commission for a term, but, you know, Ed served in the state senate for a number of years and represented this area well, including being a very influential member of, of leadership in the, in the state senate, and was, was a great asset to our community. And, you know, got a chance to meet Ed on a number of occasions, and I, one thing that I think everybody who, who meets him and who met him over the years agreed was that he was a good man and genuinely cared about the community and, and public service. And look forward to having Jane here next week and, and talking more about it, and I think this is a fantastic idea, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I also agree. I think, I don't know if I could say it any better than you two have already, but I think this is a great way to move forward, and I think naming that building after somebody who has such a, a rich history here in Clay County and brought so much is, it's very important. It will be tricky, though, to stop calling it the Bank Building, so I will, I will work on that, but no, I, I look forward to, to this officially going through next week.
I think one of the reasons to also move forward is, before we get, before that moniker gets too embedded in the, in our language, that we can, you know, the sooner we start referring, and it's, it sounds better to say it's the Quick Building than, it sounds more personal, less sort of governmentally generic.
Yeah.
So, in any case, for the reasons that I had, had mentioned, I would like to recommend that we put this on for regular agenda for next week. Is that amenable?
Mr. Commissioner, can I add one more thing to that?
Please do.
I would encourage all three of the commissioners to spend the next week or so thinking about the proper way to identify that building, along with Mr. Quick's name as an attachment. So I might suggest and encourage you all to come back, when you come back on Wednesday, maybe to have an idea in mind as to how we fully identify that building along with his name.
I, I think that's an excellent idea, and certainly we would want to be interacting with, with staff and facilities to make sure that, you know, we, that we appropriately, you know, had that indication that, on the building there. So I think that's, thank you for bringing that up. That's an important part of it, is that it's not enough just to say that, but we're going to have to have some appropriate signage or whatever other, whatever else seems appropriate.
Some, some, I'm not, not being a smart aleck, but something other than the Edward E. Quick Bank Building?
Oh, I see what you mean. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, you, you were, you're right. What the administrator was referring to and what I was not quite getting on the uptake was that it to be, whether it be the Edward Quick Administrative Building, governmental building, so the mon, the literal moniker, not the signage or anything like that. Sorry about that, Mr. Administrator, I just, been a little bit of a long meeting. So yes, I think that is something that, in the past, for instance, when we would do an appointment to a, a board or commission, there would be a blank line where we would fill in the name of that person, but I think at that time, when we take this up, we probably need to have an actual, you know, the actual language that it would, that would appear on the building. So I think the administrator is right, we need to contemplate that a little bit and come up with what would be the appropriate signage. Thank you for pointing that out. I missed that. Very well, so twenty twenty-one dash two three one. Oh, is there any comment from anyone else? Seeing none. Twenty twenty-one dash two three one will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to twenty twenty-one ordinance twenty-three. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one dash two three three is to appoint Eastern, West, excuse me, Western Commissioner John Carpenter as the Clay County Commission Representative to the Midwest Small Business Finance Board of Directors.
I'm sorry, I did have the wrong number because I was, look, I don't have that particular resolution in front of me. Thank you. Yeah, I had, I had requested that that put on the, the agenda. I think, I've, I've served on that board for some time. I think it's a good idea to start bringing other, you know, both of the other commissioners onto a variety of boards and commissions. This is one I think that would be appropriate for Commissioner Carpenter to serve on. I think I've already mentioned that to the, to the staff over there, so it wouldn't come as a total surprise to them, but I think this is a, I think Commissioner Carpenter would be a fine addition to that particular body. With that, I'll open that up for discussion. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to address that?
No, just fantastic. Look forward to serving on the, on the board, and, you know, I know that I do important work, so, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
I think you have a great selection there. I think Commissioner Carpenter would do terrific.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
By the way, just for point of information, it occurred to me to mention that the Midwest Small Business Finance Group, they basically administer some small business type loans to, to businesses in the area in and around Clay County, so it's a very broad-based group, and they do the good work of making sure that we are supporting our, our, our local businesses and providing jobs and prosperity for our citizens. With that, I'm okay with consent.
I mean, I certainly am. Maybe I need to recuse myself from that, but I feel like it's non-controversial, so...
I don't thi, I, actually, that doesn't, Mr. Administrator, that, I mean, Mr. Mr. Counselor, that does not disqualify him from voting in...
That's correct.
Consent agenda. I just want to make sure that didn't inadvertently make a problem. Very well. Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing me back on schedule there, Mr. Administrator. That brings us to what I believe to be our final issue, that is twenty twenty-one ordinance thirty-two. Please proceed.
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one ordinance thirty-two is to fulfill a legal requirement for the purpose of calling an election for the purpose of submitting to the voters of Clay County the question of extending Clay County's one-eighth of a cent law enforcement tax, which is about to sunset and needs to be renewed, and that's the purpose of this ordinance.
Yes, given the, the important work that is obvious that the Sheriff's Department does, this generates a substantial amount of the sheriff's budget, which is roughly, this generates roughly five billion dollars. Without this, I would think that we would be truly strapped to be, to come up with making up the lack of that funding for the Sheriff's Department, so I think it's absolutely vital that we place this on the ballot and, and allow this to go before a vote of the people.
And I can add a little bit, maybe...
Please do, Mr. Counselor.
Just a little bit of history here. This was originally put on the ballot in nineteen ninety-seven and passed with a twelve-year sunset. It was renewed in two thousand and nine and passed with another twelve-year sunset, so it's now up again. It is, it, it's not an increase, it's still just, just an eighth cent. What you have in front of you, just so we're clear, though, does not have a sunset. We think after twenty-four years and, and kind of a, an established need, an established use, that it, it is probably better to have it as a permanent addition, and of course, any time it could be, it could be removed, but the idea that it will automatically sunset, I think we've established that it is needed, so I do want to make sure that that's known. Sheriff Aiken is not here today because I believe he's out of town. I've spoken with him last week. He is extremely supportive of this and looks forward to working on this to make sure it passes. This is something that's essential, I think, he thinks, to, to the, the services they provide. I've talked to Captain Nagdarian, who I think is still here, and she's also supportive and looking forward to this new task to help get this passed. But I think everybody down the street at the sheriff's office feels this is essential, that this needs to happen. And again, and I also want to thank the auditor's office, who's back. Their office found this. I don't want to comment necessarily on why this wasn't found earlier, but it should have been. It needs to get passed today because the deadline to put it on the ballot is next Tuesday, before we will meet again. So this is, we've probably asked for more first read matters today than we have the entire year, but this one certainly is, is essential if you want to do it. And it's scheduled to end, I think... And it's scheduled to end, I think, in the spring. So the, I think the end of March is when this would end. But the way that the process works, November is really our next opportunity to put something on, really our only opportunity before it expires. Talked to the election board. They're ready to go. They just need it delivered to them by next Tuesday.
Thank you, because I was wanting to point out the timeliness of this, that we needed to act upon it.
Yeah, if we don't do it for the November ballot, the next available ballot to us, as I understand it, is going to be the April ballot. And because of the way that timing works and the way they do quarters, I don't think it would take effect until, I think, July 1, maybe, maybe September 1. I think it's September 1, actually. So it's, it would be something, it would expire before it could be extended.
It would certainly result in a gap of the revenue coming into the Sheriff's Department.
Yep.
Very well, with that, further discussion. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes, just that I support extending the sales tax. Obviously, it goes to a very important and necessary cause of public safety here in Clay County. And I, you know, we can't afford to take a multimillion-dollar hit to the Sheriff's Department, obviously, so support extending it. I also support getting rid of the sunset. You know, I think we've had two pretty overwhelming renewals of this in the past. And, you know, as County Council mentioned, the elected body of the county would always have the ability to pull back the sales tax if, in the future, it deemed it necessary. Just to clarify in terms of the November, because you're talking November of this year.
That's correct. This coming November.
And we don't expect there to be anything else on the ballot, or do we, do we have an understanding of that?
I will say yes and no. There are two matters coming on the November ballot, according to the election board. They are not consequential. They will not impact very much the fact that we will be paying for most of this. I think there is a matter out of Holt, as I recall, and Holt is obviously very small, so their portion of that ballot would be very small. And there's a second one.
Was it Oakview?
I think. I think it was Oakview.
But so most voters, otherwise in Clay County, would not have been voting but for this.
That's right. This will be it. And there are two very small matters in two very small locations.
And there is...
By the way, that date, we didn't say it. The date is November the 2nd, November 2.
First Tuesday of November. So there is expense with holding elections, obviously.
Absolutely.
And we don't have to necessarily, we can talk offline too if you want, but I, is there a way to avoid this kind of thing in the future in terms of? Because it sounds like we probably could have sought to renew this last year. And by we, I guess I mean the previous commission, in such a manner that we wouldn't have had to hold a special election just for this purpose.
I think that's fair. And that's part of the reason, I think, we, the idea of these sunsets is probably not a good idea because, I mean, that's, that's a cost to the citizens every year that we have to put it back on a ballot, for sure. But yeah, there will be an expense. It will be an expense borne primarily by this county. And that's, that's, you know, obviously, that, what it has to be, I expect it'll be at least $100,000. We're getting an estimate, and it could be certainly more than that.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Any comments from a member of the public? Seeing none. Is there a motion for the approval of 2021 Ordinance 32?
Make a motion to approve 2021 Ordinance 32.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021 Ordinance 32. Further discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
That issue passes. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Would entertain a motion for the placement of the various items that we've heard on regular and consent agendas for next week. Is there a motion?
Commissioner, I move that we put the following items on the consent calendar for next Wednesday. 2021-222, 223, 224, 225, 226, 227, 228, 232, 219, 215, 216, 218, and 233. And the following items on the regular agenda for next Wednesday. 221, excuse me, 2021-214, 2021 Ordinance 31, 2021-221, 2021-220, and 2021-231.
Motion has been made to place the items previously listed on respectively the consent and regular agenda. Discussion? Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any public, members of the public who would like to comment on any non-agenda items? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who would like to comment on any non-agenda items?
Tracy Baldwin, Assessor-elect and current deputy assessor. I just wanted to real quick say thank you to the clerk, the county clerk, for bringing up the dates that were moved back due to the charter government of last week's meeting. And also, thank you to the clerk's office for doing such a great job of handling all the excess of BOEs this year because we did have an increase of that number. It's went very smoothly. With the dates, I wanted to reiterate that they've moved back, which puts everybody, the assessor's office, the clerk's office, and the collector in kind of a rush to get everything done in time. We've came up with ways to get this done and accomplished, at least in our end, and I know the clerk has done as well. It's going to put the collector in kind of a bind to get the billing file ready to go. So I was just wanting to point out that this is something that we need to take note of for future, to maybe adjust those dates back a little to ease the pressure on some of the taxing entities as well. They have to set their levies, and with their numbers coming in about three weeks later, it's going to put a rush on them as well to get those levies set. And if we follow the rules as the way the charter had actually said, they would be basing those levies off of last year's, which would be an estimated number. Because technically, we wouldn't have to release the 11A form until November 1, which after the levies would already be created. So this does cause an issue. I think it's a very good discussion to have in the future, especially before next year comes around. If there's any way we can adjust that, we'd, we'd like to be in the discussion of how to remedy that some. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other office holders who would like to comment on any non-agenda items? Seeing none. Are there any agencies that like to comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Does the county administrator have any comments he would like to make?
Yes, excuse me, yes, please. For those in attendance and anybody that's listening in through any other facility, I'd like to announce that beginning with the month of September, our meeting dates will change officially and permanently, to the extent that permanently can be met. We will begin our September meetings, meeting only on Wednesdays. The first meeting will be September the 8th. But our business sessions will begin at 6:00 p.m. on the days that it's a business session, and our work sessions, as such as today, will begin at 2:00 p.m., beginning with September the 8th, effective then and going forward.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Just wanted to make notice of the fact, I think there are two things that are happening right now that I think reflect well on this commission. One, we have just addressed, and that is the naming of the, of the building, proposed naming of the, of the new bank, the bank building that we purchased after Senator Quick. The second one is an event that we, I hope we'll be all able to attend, which is the groundbreaking for the African-American memorial. Those in and of themselves are not as impactful as a lot of the business we do in a direct way. But I think in an indirect way, and I think in a way that is affecting the culture of the county with the county government, and that is, I think it reflects a more inclusive, a broader take on how it is that we as county commission serve our constituents. And certainly, I think it indicates the spirit of cooperation that I think is running throughout county government, thanks in no small part, not only to our administrator and staff, but also to the two, and I really can't call you new commissioners anymore, you're becoming very seasoned. But I think that, I think a lot of credit is due to the associate commissioners for helping to encourage that, that atmosphere that we are enjoying. And that is manifested in those two examples that I set forward. With that, that brings us to approval of the amendments. Is there a motion related to approval of the amendments? We have three sets, July 22, 2021, July 28, 2021, and August 5, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the July 22, the July 28, and the August 5 meeting minutes as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the July 22, July 28, and August 5 commission meeting minutes. Discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any written reports? We did, of course, get a report from the, from the auditors' department during our discussion period. So I guess that sort of counts for a written report, but it's already been received. Are there any further written reports for the commission? Very well. With that, we have been noticed to go into executive session under legal. That is Missouri Statute 610.021 (1). Is there a motion related to going into executive session and adjourning therefrom?
I move that we go into executive session and adjourn therefrom.
Motion has been made for the commission to go into executive session under legal, Missouri Statute 610.021 (1) legal, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
We will now go into executive session and adjourn therefrom. Thank you very much.
Executive session isn't here.